You know, for projects and stuff. And then I'm gonna work all the numbers and give you guys an update on what the show's.
All right, I will call this meeting to order. Got the recorder going? Okay. Members present, Bruce Truka, James B., and myself, Chair.
Kevin's phone in.
Kevin's on the phone, okay.
You there, Kev?
Here.
Okay. Kevin's present by phones. So, all right.
So for this meeting, you guys all have the worksheet that Joyce, I think Todd made you copies if you didn't have one. And my pages are different than yours, so... This is kind of the rest of the budget that are the odd items that we haven't covered yet. My page is five, but it's, if you look off to the left, the code number that we're gonna look at is 101-7200-52360.
Seven-seven-two-zero.
One-zero.
And it may not be page five because I've been cleaning up these inactive lines, so you might be on page four.
Did anybody find it?
Zero-four, and then what? Seven-two-zero-four.
Looking for 101.
Yeah, 101.
Seven-two-zero-zero.
Zero-zero.
Five-two-three-sixty.
Yeah, got it.
No public.
Contractual services.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the Health Department.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure where I don't think Joyce has the final number for new pages.
It's page five.
Very top.
Very top.
Well, mine's on page five, but I don't look at the bottom.
Well, since I ran a new one today that they've got.
They're gonna be a little bit different.
Made the things different, so.
I just want you to be aware of that. I don't know if it's staying the same or going up.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's stayed the same as what this year and last year was for our Health Department subsidy. It's $226,178.04. Been that number for several years now.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is 101-7202-52354.
Same page, okay.
Okay. That's the Indigenous Burials that we pay for, people that can't afford. It'll, I think, on Staples St. Kelly, is that correct? Seventy-two-fifty. Those are people that can't afford to have anything. The funeral homes come through us. I just wanted to make sure you knew what that was for, and then we cover the bare cost of that.
We haven't had one of those for a while. We had one.
I just paid one today.
But I'm saying, prior to that, it'd been a while for the previous one.
Well, we've raised it since we've been here.
Right, I remember.
Like thirty-five-hundred or...
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's kind of like doubled in the last four or five years.
Right.
So.
The 2020 budget is $7,250. Actual was $3,750.
Correct.
So there's a carryover in that line?
Well, it'll just go, if we don't use anymore, it'll just go back into the general fund, and then.
To be used in the budget for next year.
Should just put $7,250 in the budget, yeah.
Okay, that was a big question I had about a lot of things that we've already discussed. Is that true in all categories?
Yes.
Unless it's encumbered, right?
Unless it's encumbered, and then that just, the encumbrance carries over.
Have we discussed any encumbered in the financial meetings yet?
No, we have not.
Okay.
I mean, 'cause those are purchase orders that are already existing for things, you know, that we're planning for in this budget. If it's not actually spent at the end of the year, it carries over to next year. It's not a part of... It's still considered this year's budget. It doesn't come out of next year's money. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's a little confusing, but, yeah.
Like, you'll write a, you'll go ahead and write a PO for the electric for the majority of the year. So you might see it encumbered, but that doesn't mean we might spend it all. There might be some left to carry over.
Right, okay.
That answers your question.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what's carried over.
Next one.
What if it's not encumbered, then it's...
Well.
Goes back to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, I'm on page seven, but it'd be 101-7204-52360.
Page five. Ambulance district?
Yep. And Kurt, you might know, I've a sheet I had that said $121,345, $344.00 and some change.
That sounds about right for the last final year or something.
Yeah, it's off by just a little bit because their quarter versus our quarter would actually have December of this year, uh, November and December of this year booked into it, so the total number's not gonna equal exactly what our year three is. It'll be just a little bit less.
So Kevin, are we okay with that number?
You have what number in there?
Hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and...
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be enough because the, well, when we get the first payment, it'll actually, we should've got our first quarterly payment for the third year of the contract already.
Right.
As of this year.
That runs through December, yeah.
Yeah, so you really would only need, in all technicalities, seventy-five percent of that yearly number, but yeah, that's one-twenty-one would be close enough.
So I've got $109,000 for 2020.
That's the previous year.
That was previous.
It goes up a little bit every year.
So you write in there for our next one to be $121,340, some change.
And that next line that says CJAD Security Deposit Refund for $3,000, of course, we didn't spend that this year. We may be spending that. I've got that $3,000 in again for next year because when they leave, we may have to pay that back to them, less any damages or whatever, like any security deposit would work.
Okay.
Good there. Uh, now we're at 101-7310-52525, and that's the tree.
Next page.
Our plan was still to leave twenty-five in there.
What was the?
Set up a unit.
What was the number?
101-7310.
Next page, straight here. Just page, flip it over to the one you were just on.
Right.
Right up here.
Five-two-five-two-five.
There you go.
So typically, it's zeros this year, but typically that money's spent in the last quarter of the year. Just explaining it, next year, quite a bit of that's gonna be on removing diseased trees and trimming trees. It'll be our year to do that.
And that's all it'll be used for?
No, there could be some stump removal in there. There could be some plantings too, but it's, next year will be heavy on maintenance for...
Existing trees.
What's that?
Maintenance on existing trees.
Existing trees, right, yes.
So this will be all existing trees?
No, I said it's gonna be, that'll be the major. There could be stump removal, there could be some plantings in there too. But we're planning most of that to be spent on maintenance next year.
What's the sixteen-nine-fifty-two encumbered for this year? What was that spent on?
Those are plantings. So, Spring Street, which they're doing now, and park planting.
They're planting trees right now?
Yes. Those time you plant trees, usually in October, November, the best time of year to plant them.
Okay. Next.
Uh, let's see. Oh, Joyce, you wanna cover the bike path there, right below the tree maintenance?
Well, the bike path, uh, that line was, the city share of the bike path that we put in, it's completed, so there won't be anything in there next year, 'cause it's a done, so that'll go to zero.
Okay.
And we're still awaiting, probably around this page here. Uh, the bike path line, the 101-7310-52530, Bike Path COTF Grant. We're just awaiting, uh, our money to come back in on that. So that'll be a zero for next year too. That was a reimbursement grant, so that money has yet to come in.
George, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How many tree maintenance, how many trees you plan on planting this year next year?
I don't know the exact amount, I don't have the number. I can get it for you though.
I've had complaints about people not wanting trees in the tree line. Is this, is this what this is about?
If anybody is at, like a Spring Street didn't want it, they didn't get one.
It was on the plan.
Well, Plymouth Street was being timed too. The people that objected to it didn't let us know that before or after they were planted. So we didn't, we got, we only got, um, one, one person that didn't want it. They didn't get a tree.
Okay, here's my problem with planting trees in the tree line. We have leaves falling. They're getting down in our storm sewers. We're telling people not to put leaves on, keep them up above the curb in the tree line. But we have all these leaves, that trees that are planted in the tree line that are falling on the street and getting into our storm sewers.
Well, that's, that's nothing new. I mean, wherever you live, you can't, you know, this is where most trees are.
Don't we want to curb that off and keep the leaves and keep the cleanup not hard?
It really wouldn't make hardly any difference. If you plant them back five or ten feet, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna eventually get in the streets. That's what happens. I mean, me and our guys go around when they cover up the catch basins, and they, they actually go around and clean them up, you know, and just, same with grass clippings. You know, and every year we have an issue with grass clippings, and people blowing those in the street. They go around, they cover up the, uh, catch basins, and we have to cut it off. It's just, it's just the way things are.
Now, Memorial Tree Program, I don't have any problems with that, but tree maintenance and planting trees, especially in the lines, I have problems with that.
Good in any city, that's where trees are planted. I mean, they're planted on a tree lawn because. Well, yeah. I, you know, try to imagine a city without trees in the tree lawn. What would it look like? It'd be pretty bad looking. That's why they call it a tree lawn, you know, so that's where trees go.
Mr. Keever. All right. The trees are getting planted today. Are city employees planting them, or do we hire like a tree service to plant them?
We hire, sorry, we don't plant those ourselves.
Okay. I wanted, I just wanted to treat maintenance. I don't want to, I don't want you to plant any more trees.
Well, you don't want any more trees planted in the city?
Not in the tree lines. They get in the sewers, they get in, leaves get in the storm sewers.
I could, you know, speak for, uh, myself, and I'm grateful that people planted trees in the tree lawn for many, many years. We begin to enjoy them now. So if you, if you don't want trees in a tree lawn, then why don't we just take the grass out and put stone there? And while we're doing it, take sidewalks off, 'cause they have to be shovelled, you know?
You know, that's what's probably what you want.
Well, there's a, there's a collective good for the city. You know, you want your downtown to be nice and clean, you want your, you want a tree-lined street. You wanna be able to attract residents. And the way you do that is, they have an attractive city. Trees, parks are part of all the things. So, I mean, it's not, drive to any city. It's not anything that works. It's just, Bruce could speak to that. Bruce's, you know, he's been to, uh...
Anybody else have any feelings on this, Bruce?
Well, I just know that the majority of the money has to be spent on the, on the maintenance part of it. I mean, I know we planted a lot of trees, but now, you know, after going through that class, you know, that, uh, that lady from the state of Ohio, she said, you know, cities get kind of lopsided because they wanna plant trees, but then they don't do any of the maintenance, so...
And that's one thing we learned in class, right?
Right, so I mean, I mean, the majority of the budget should go towards trying to take care of what we got.
Well, we've been so far behind in the city planting trees. We tried to catch up the last two or three years, and now we'll swing to, to maintenance now. Which those funds will be, will be needed and be put to good use next year.
I've got a question. Are you gonna use these funds?
Go ahead.
Just for the record, I, that's one of the programs I'm in favor of, but I think it's vital to what we're trying to do to show a beautiful community, and I'm in favor of leaving that place.
If it's in the budget for 2021, are you gonna use that money to plant trees in the downtown business district for next year?
No, that, that, we don't have anywhere near enough money to do that. That's a, that would, that would require a grant.
'Cause you'd have to cut concrete out?
Yeah, gotta take concrete out. It's a, it's a big thing there, so, um, you know, Bruce can tell you it's not that easy.
Yeah, you gotta have grace, and you gotta bring in different soil, and you gotta have the right type of tree, and, yeah, that's a monumental project.
It's a, it's, for me, it's kind of a dream, but, you know, what we're trying to do is maintain what we have right now, and sometimes in the future, you know, we can certainly look at that in our administration or next administration. I think it's, I think it's important. But right now, realistically, we don't have any money to do that, and twenty-some thousand dollars. We, next year's money will be, like I say, spent on maintenance, almost all the maintenance. We don't plan to do a whole lot of plantings at all next year.
So Joyce, the sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-two dollars from 2020, is that encumbered, or will it go back to the?
That's encumbered.
Oh, wait a minute. You're looking at the final column?
Yes.
The final column is the unencumbered balance.
Unencumbered, so that will go back to the general fund?
Yeah.
Then there'll be a flat twenty-five thousand in there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what's there as of, well, I ran this Friday, but, yeah.
I, I do wanna clarify, Kim, one thing. I think the list of trees that are authorized now are the ones that don't go after our sewer or storm pipes. Like back in the old days when you sell the maples.
Sugar maple, yeah.
Yeah, they'll go right, yeah. So the ones now that are on the authorized list are ones that won't give, plus they don't get as big as...
And the leaves still go in the...
Well, like the mayor said, even in the past.
You can't help that, unless they're not there.
The leaves give our city workers, our city streets departments, I've been doing a member.
Wow, now it's time to...
I remember being here not too long ago, that we don't have time, so.
You're right, I did say that.
Okay.
All right.
Next item.
Uh, we're gonna go down to 101-7315-52530. This is just an FYI for you guys. That was when we fixed the pool. We still have fifty-two thousand sitting on the PO. We're just waiting on one last, uh, piece of equipment or some parts that Jeff's still looking for, but after that, we can close that out, and hopefully the majority of that'll go, it'll go back in the general fund.
Right.
So that item will...
As long as we don't have any bills left, which hopefully we don't, this is something that we were supposed to already have, I believe.
Yeah.
And so that, that money will go back to the general fund balance.
So how much are you wanting to budget for next year on the pool?
Nothing there, nothing in that line, that was a zero.
That's just for the pool improvement.
That was, that was proceeds from the note we got.
Correct.
Got encumbered, and now it can go back to the general fund.
Okay, I got a question. So is there anything that's maybe would be planned? I know you're saying that there's nothing planned, but where are we at on a splash park? I mean, is there a possibility of anything out there?
Well, Jeff and I have talked about that. We had a, we had a estimate on it probably like two, three years ago, that would be several hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's why I was wondering what it, what it would cost.
So, and then the pool repairs, emergency repairs were needed, and that basically took, took the money that we're gonna try to use for the splash park, so... Our intention, our intention is, once that gets paid off and we get through COVID, now let's look real strongly at that.
Yeah, Guy has got two, I wanna hear it.
Well, I didn't say anything. I just was saying that, you know, we, we talked about it.
My kids have got friends in Guy.
I, I didn't know how many they have.
Tell me all about that.
Yeah, and, you know, and we're gonna have... What we need is something like, the audience has a, a free spot found with H, whatever they're winning, ten million dollars. We don't, you know, we have a...
Where's the pool thing at?
But the Filmon Trust, very generous of this, is something that, that only, right now, gets us about seventy thousand a year, something around that. Well, we can't really use the principal, who's, who's in something there.
Six, we're not, eight-six.
Maybe, maybe somebody will drop about five hundred thousand where we're at here, so.
We would reach out to, um, over at Pioneer to see if it could be a project for them to design, and then you could go out and help evolve, and it just, they just complicate everything.
We're not giving up on it.
All right. Okay.
Not that idea.
All right. Uh, if we can go to, uh, 101-7620-52528, that's the airport, new equipment. Uh, we lowered that to a thousand dollars. And then, we've been talking about this parallel taxiway at the airport. Um, I did talk to Kevin. Looks like our share will be about seventy thousand, but then we're doing, they're called the Pappy Lights. Uh, our share, that's about ten thousand, so it'd be eighty thousand. Now, Kevin did say that if we put this in the budget and we get into February to where we don't think we can afford it, we can, we can back out. So talking to Joyce and the mayor, that we thought we'd go ahead and put it in the budget, and then if need be, we'd tell you guys to maybe act a pull-up.
So that would be put into airport improvements?
Did we ever, did we end up getting a new mower out there this year?
Uh, yes. Gosh, Kevin, I keep forgetting you're there on the phone.
That's okay.
Yeah, the, the money we got, I think the thirty thousand we got, we paid for the mower out of that.
Okay, I knew we talked about it. I didn't remember if it ever happened or not.
Yeah, that's, that's why that ninety-two-fifty, uh, the majority of that's still there because we used the cares money to pay for it.
F A A improvements to your share.
Okay.
So we were gonna put eighty thousand in the airport improvements for next year. Still don't know if it's gonna be a hundred percent funded.
Yeah.
We feel like it is, but we don't know.
And that thirty thousand for the airport, I mean, we had already budgeted for this mower, so you didn't actually see the thirty thousand, you know, how do I remember? You, you just saw the money come out of the, uh, budget itself, but we have been reimbursed for all but about five thousand dollars at this point, and when I turn in the final bills, uh, for our manager fees in December, we'll get the rest of it, and that, you know, that goes directly back to the general fund.
Kevin, did you hear that from Joyce?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
I'm all about airports.
I'm just saying. Go ahead.
You guys okay?
Yep.
Now, I will tell you, we talked to Kevin here in the last week or so, and I think we've shared with you, we do have thirty-three hangers out there, and they're all full, and there's two on a waiting list. So, um, it seems like, um, it's an improvement hopefully we can make, and be good for the future. Now we're gonna go down to General Admin, which is 101-7712, and we'll go to 52427, that's Kelly's, Kelly's department. So they made some changes in there. Kelly, you wanna move over there? Four-two-seven.
Joyce and I talked about it. Um, we decided to go ahead and increase the postage by five hundred. And we also decided to reduce the legal advertising down to forty-five hundred.
Did you guys see that one? I missed that one, I'm sorry. Seven-seven-one-two-five-two-three-six-one.
Five-two-three-six-one, back to the other page, oh, page eight.
No, I missed that one.
How much you saying? Produce it.
Legal advertising is going down to forty-five hundred.
Okay.
And...
This is under general admission?
Yeah, up in the, page eight, bottom of page eight. Two-three-six-seven. Uh, five-two-three-six-one. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, office incidentals, 101-7712-52426. That's going down five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
And then, operating incidentals, 101-7712-52450. That's going down to two thousand dollars. And then, the General Admin, gas and oil, we're gonna take that down to two thousand. That number is 101-7712-52454.
Probably need to start with having a use of that.
Um, the General Admin, gas and oil, that's for the flex. Police and fire use the flex whenever they need to go somewhere for, um, training. Also, that covers when Landon takes his vehicle out and puts out the planning zoning signs, whenever he has to go out and about, so that covers all this gas and oil as well. Um, that's pretty much everything. I think I have, Joyce, am I missing anything?
No, I don't think so. Um, we adjusted the General Admin copy machine use, uh, by five hundred dollars, and I believe we added it to council because of all the copies for all these meetings and everything that have to be run. So we reduced it, like I say, by five hundred dollars, or just fifty-five hundred. But I think that's about it.
Well, in the General Admin though, we have, um, 101-7712-52430, and that's our contribution to the Carford County Partnership. I know, I'm not sure, Jeff, or Joyce, how much have we paid them this year so far, or?
So far, we've paid them thirty.
Can you take that to appropriations?
I'm sorry, what?
So can't that go to appropriations?
Well, it was in appropriations for this year's budget.
Right.
There was fifty thousand appropriated, they only sent thirty.
We sent thirty is because we're just gonna wait and see how the tax revenue... So we sent thirty is because we're just gonna wait and see how probably our tax revenue came along, even though we pledged fifty.
Did you reach out to Gai to see what they were planning on doing next year?
Um, no, that's a good, good question. Um, I know they they were they were down a year ago and they went back up this year. I'll I'll reach out to Mayor O'Leary and ask him.
Might just be nice information that we're on the same page. I mean, if we're learning there and type of a deal, I think if we're all doing something similar, that makes it easier than if we're all about to get together.
Yeah, that's a that's a great point.
I mean, if we got four hundred jobs in two thousand twenty, I'd say give me six, shit. But.
Well, they they it's 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 more than that. Like we talked about it in past budget meetings. They also they they train, help to train workforce. They run so many good programs under that program to help work with the school systems to try to match up jobs. Their liaison between so many other government agencies for the county too.
Well, they have the website for job hunters too.
They have a web, they have a website for job hunters. Their proper, whatever it's called. I mean, they yeah, and and it's their, you know, if you guys would have been there, um, as we made, as they made a presentation for some people that are looking at us, uh, it was an excuse, it was a I think I was going here for this trigger, but it was an incredible presentation. Everything was well organized. They were the folks were very complimentary. The folks from our GP, uh, were there and they said, you guys nailed it. I mean, everything was done detailed on the T, the handouts, uh, the way everything was so done so professionally. We we wouldn't have been able to do that on our own. And we just don't have the talent and the time to do that. They do. And for us to be able to do that ourselves.
You say they were trained. Oh, they were they were putting out a presentation for the company looking.
Looking at us, yeah, yeah. And they had, they're they're, everything was done to a T. And for us to be able to put that on, you know, we have to hire we we would just have to have our own department, which you probably look at, I would say, by the time you hire somebody with that kind of quality ability, you look at a secretary too, you probably look at a budget of a couple hundred grand, they would think. And it's just, like, if you look at what economic developments that are budgeted in other communities, our size is a little bit bigger. It's in the two to three hundred thousand mill a rainy. I think we're really, we can't afford to do that. Our our best option right now is the partnership. It is the very, may not be the best option in the future, but right now with budget constraints, uh, I think
Okay, you put up, you put up a great argument. Can't we lower it to like thirty? Then we can appropriate twenty more if if we get something.
Well, I I don't think it should be a carrot and stick approach. I think it should be, you know, this, us and Galian, if we're, the commissioners put in, I don't know, a hundred or something. They have to rely on that and their staffing over there. They have, uh, several people that work there. They work hard at it. You know, it's, if you look around and see, there's not a lot of, uh, if you look around, there's not a lot of four hundred, five hundred, six hundred factories. What their job is to be ready when they're coming.
Mr. McKeever?
Yes.
We could, we could give them thirty now and then if things start looking better in the spring or something, we could raise it later or something.
Well, I would, I would suggest to, we'll check with Galian and then keep it at the same if we could, and then we'll do the same approach like we've been doing. You know, the same approach and we'll give them, we'll look at it in June or July and if it's, if thirty's all we can afford, we can give them thirty.
So how about the twenty that's still in there? Is that coming back to the general fund?
Well, we're gonna wait and see. We're gonna wait to see what the tax revenues are. We did pledge twenty more to them. We'll see if we can, at least give them part of that, so. And whatever's left, then we'd come back to the general fund.
When will you be looking at that?
Then by December thirty first.
Well, we'll be looking at the end.
We'll be looking at very quickly.
We'll bring you back what Gai is gonna do and then when we have our next meeting on the budget, we'll update you.
I just think it's a lot of money for the city prosecutor.
What what is your, what is your alternative?
I just said thirty.
Now, what is your alternative for economic development? Do you wanna?
No, I'm saying, I'm not saying get out. I'm saying stay in.
I, yeah.
Just fifty's a little much right now for where everything's going.
Well, if you have a, if you have a you know, five percent revenue decrease, five percent of would be twenty five hundred dollars. I mean, if it's so, it's so why would you cut that? You're basically cutting that forty percent, right?
Forty dollars appropriated the rest of the fifty, right?
Well, let's, like Jeff said, why don't we, I'll get back with everyone. I'll see what Gai is doing next year and I'll email everyone, so.
So I I I hope you do because I've asked you to get back with me a couple times on some stuff and you haven't, so.
What would that be?
I would appreciate it back then, stuff like that. I had to ask like three times to find out about that.
Will you ask if there was an official, uh, you know, we don't have.
No, it's just a, just a map. That's all.
Okay, let's move on.
Hey, Mr. McKeever?
Yes.
Um, the one oh one seven seven one zero five two three two zero, mayor cellphone. I've I've tried calling the mayor several times this year and texting and I have yet to ever get a call or a text back. So if we're paying for a, taxpayers are paying for a cellphone for the city, on the city's behalf, but he's not gonna return calls, I I don't think we should pay for that. Especially when not communicate between offices.
You can go ahead and take that out. I'll pay for my own cellphone.
Or on a plan. It's not like we can just pick and choose a plan.
However, what could be done? Where I'll be happy to just, whatever's in that line, I'll be happy to contribute out of my pocket. Would that be acceptable?
Well, I'd I'd like to have you at least answer the phone when I call you.
I don't remember even having you call me. They are texting me. I've got my cellphone in the rack. It's right in my pocket here. I don't, I don't even know, you know, there's this.
Let me call it here and see if it's the right number.
While he's doing that, which one are we gonna go to next?
Uh, we're gonna go to the law director, which is five two five two five.
Is it right?
What neighbor do you have?
Five, six, nine, twenty, eight, ten.
No, it's, no, it's my phone, eight, three, four, twenty, twenty one, in my cellphone.
Mr. Summer, what's that again?
One zero one seven seven two five, five two five, five two five.
Is this on the personal services? Later.
Law director, you EDP.
Page eleven. Page eleven.
One oh one seven seven two five.
Page eleven.
Um, the dark law director, um, his budget for two thousand twenty was three thousand. Uh, he's only used three hundred and twenty seven dollars. Uh, he'd like to leave it at three thousand. I guess the courthouse is going to some new digital courtroom procedures and he doesn't, not too sure what all he's gonna need. So he'd like to leave that at three, just in case he needs it. And the rest of his department stays the same.
Yeah, I was hearing that they're they're changing some sort of program and that things can be changed while they're in the courtroom for journal entries and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I guess to cut down on personal contact. So I, yeah, I don't know what all's involved in it, but I know someone who works in the prosecutor's office over there.
Five two one one two, is what you said.
No, it's seven seven two, one oh one seven seven two five, five two five two five, under the new EDP equipment.
It's on page twelve?
Yeah, page twelve, sorry. Top of the page.
We're at one oh one seven seven five zero five two one one one. On this category is the maintenance utility worker. We're still kinda sitting on hold and not gonna put anything in the budget for that at this point. Might have to come back the first of the year to see where our funds are and see if we can afford to hire somebody.
It's so five two
one one one.
Okay.
That whole.
Civil service clerk salary.
It's one oh one seven seven five zero.
Five zero, okay, wrong one.
Then seven five zero, that whole section is utility. And we've got nothing in there for them.
Oh, okay, good, I got it.
Okay.
Page, page sixteen, fifteen at the bottom.
Find it, Jim.
Page fifteen at the bottom. Per, uh, personal services, five two one one one.
That's where it starts.
Got it.
Move on.
Okay.
We're gonna go back into lands and buildings. And that number will be in one oh one seven 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 zero.
Seven 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 zero.
Five two.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah. Seven seven sixty. It's page eighteen.
Eighteen? So we're gonna go to five two five five eight.
Five two five five eight.
Yeah. And we previously talked about this, that we would be doing some work out at the pool house, fire department roof. Uh, we did have parking lot six in there and the wastewater treatment plant dry. So we have parking lot six. Um, I talked to Lynn McKeever and the three parking lots that we've been talking about doing. He goes, you're looking at about sixty five thousand dollars a parking lot. Cause they all need build out and lowered because they just got added to over the years. But if we only have one parking lot in that building improvement, that puts us at a hundred and ninety four thousand five hundred dollars. So it still leaves two parking lots of a hundred and thirty thousand that won't be done. But we have a company, um, probably at the next, not tomorrow, but the first meeting in December wanna talk about the Pines reservoir. So if we would, what they wanna do, and I don't wanna get into a lot of detail because I'll let the the guy explain it from that company. We would potentially could sell it through CIC and take that money and do the other two parking lots. So I'm not trying to muddy the water. I'm just trying to tell you that's an option out there. Depending on what kind of money we get for the Pines, you get.
How much, how much money is still sitting in the CIC waiting to come back towards parking lot major?
That's my question. Joyce?
There. We're up to date with CIC. They've, uh, turned in everything that they received at this point.
We're gonna do thirty for the Bakers parking lot, go back into, and what actual line item number?
Well, it went into the permanent improvement fund, which is fund two forty seven. Uh, and we received, uh, twenty eight thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars of proceeds from that property.
So where did the burger thing go?
Uh, that was in last year's. It it went into this fund too, permanent improvement fund. I I don't recall.
Well, it's like, cause that sidewalk, you know, was put in the budget last year. So now that materialized.
That's a different issue.
Well, we got sidewalk, we're all the way to burger chain, that's up one block right there. Now it's gonna be from there all the way out to Walmart, it's gonna be probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna have to have easements to go through yards and to stay off the right of way, I think, from what Lynn McKeever told me, but.
I guess I'd like to see facts and figures on that.
What's that?
I'd like to see the facts and figures on that then.
Okay.
I mean, I really would. I mean, we had set the money aside last year from the CIC. That's what Rob said it would be used for. So, I mean, you know.
For for the sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk, yeah.
Well, I guess my concern is that that thirty or twenty eight thousand from the Bakers lot is just gonna get washed away here in some other fund and kinda forgotten about when it was, the whole purpose of selling that was to fix some of these other parking lots. I I don't wanna see it get thrown into two forty seven and not get used for repairs for parking lots. I guess I'm trying to keep everybody honest here.
Well, it had to go into the permanent improvement fund by Ohio revised code. I mean, I couldn't put it anywhere else. Now, if you guys had wanted to appropriate that, that would be fine, but I couldn't throw it in the general fund.
Okay, so we could then make it, we could vote to move it back over to another fund?
No, you could vote to pay for it out of this fund. You could appropriate it out of this permanent improvement fund. We can't move it somewhere else. It'd have to come out of this.
Well, let's all stick a post-it note on our computer monitor so that we don't forget that that twenty eight thousand was supposed to be.
Well, we can't spend it unless you appropriate it for it. That's just the money that we got from.
Well, last time we appropriated it for it, you guys forgot about it and then said that you never had it appropriated, so.
You know, Kurt, I told you about that and I said we would have pulled it anyway due to what we were in front with COVID. It wouldn't have got done. But that money that went into that line is for sale of property.
That's understandable, but then even after that, someone continued to deny that the money was ever appropriated.
Well, well, if you're looking, you're talking about me, so it's not like I'm trying to deceive. It's just that we talked about this last year. It got thrown into a different line. It was not designated for that one parking lot. So when we were looking to the budget to see that, you know, that's, I I may have culpriment. You know, that's my fault and I, uh, you know, if 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 that's, if you think that I'm a liar because of that, I, you know, I'm not lying, but it just, we forgot about it. So, I mean, I forgot about it completely. I asked several people. Nobody could remember it.
You mean in this fund?
So there it is, you know.
So is the money still appropriated for the parking lot?
Is the money still, it's it's not inappropriate for the parking lot.
It's sitting in two forty seven.
It's in two forty seven.
It has to go. We haven't appropriated anything from the improvement fund.
Well, is that one of the lands?
Yeah, this is for Joyce's. It has to go into two forty seven.
Yeah, but no, that's a big part of that, not a lot. We're not talking about the appropriation last year, that lands and overalls.
Right, right.
I think it was land and buildings outside contract.
Yeah, so that's a different. So we were, just because of COVID, you know, just in states with our maintenance, we just pull them back.
Well, I can't move it from this fund to the general fund. Well, I can't move it from this fund to the general fund, do that.
No. Expenses that we thought we could, you know, save money from the general fund, try to conserve funds.
Could we create a line item specifically for parking lot repairs?
Yeah.
Ask Joyce there, Joyce, a question.
Could we create a, a line item, a new line item number specifically for parking lot repairs?
Yeah.
And then we could move money to there, so that it doesn't kinda get mixed up with this other stuff.
Yeah, so we could appropriate it, two hundred, the line item, two forty-seven, twenty-eight thousand to that parking lot improvement.
Yeah, I could, I could create that line, that, for that twenty-eight thousand, I could create that in the, uh, permanent improvement fund for parking lot improvements.
So if you're going to do that, then that would be for like all parking lots?
It won't designate any parking.
But that twenty-eight thousand isn't gonna take care of all the parking lots, and what, when we, when you started putting this in the permanent improvement fund, you know, because we took the proceeds from the, uh, water distribution garage, and if we sell another building, which we, the one on Isaac Beal, whatever, that was to go to put the new building up on Urban Street, and if we keep taking money out of this, we're not gonna have that either. So we have to be careful on how much you appropriate out of this fund, if we're going to pay for a building on Urban Street.
So, what we wanna get at, I think, is if we're gonna appropriate for parking lots, we want that money in there for parking lots, just for parking lots, and it can't be moved around for anything else but parking lots, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Or maybe parking, parking lots and sidewalks.
Well, that's what I tried for, but it went down to a fire or a block crash.
Maybe that's something we should fuck, fuck, harm, like, too.
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, if you have any questions, speak up.
I will.
Okay, just checking. Next.
Uh, this is just a question for all of you, um, one oh one, seven seven, eight one, five two, one one one, and this is just our COVID enforcement, which is Gordon.
Seven seven, eight one.
Five two, one one one. Seven, four, six. Seven, seven.
Just making sure we're okay to leave Gordon in there.
Seven, seven, eight one.
We don't have the other option yet, do we?
Page twenty-one.
No, I don't think so, but I, I think he does a good job, and I think we need it, but, uh, just train it before you to talk about, so.
And we, you know, we didn't increase anything for next year, he would still be part-time, and, you know, and I put in the, I kept the thirty thousand for demolition the same going into next year, because there may be something that needs to be torn down. That budget basically stayed the same as it was this year.
That's fine, I'm gonna opt here.
Okay.
Definitely needing, especially for the BZA, 'cause there's no, or the BBSA, we don't have anybody to, uh, get these condemned, houses condemned when they don't take care of them.
Yeah, I mean, there's a place where you get a lot of bang for your buck. There's, uh, there's no doubt about it, the people, citizens really appreciate what we're doing there.
We didn't spend any of that thirty thousand on demolition?
We didn't this year, but we have one coming up that's gonna get done yet this year, I think.
Maybe two.
Two?
Maybe two, if, uh, you have one more.
About eighty to nine thousand, depending on how big a house it is, um, the one over here on East Street, right over here, I think he got bid for about eighty-eight hundred, but he was trying to get another one, so we can get that in tow.
And you want thirty more in it next year?
Yeah, we would, we would just get like the same amount.
Well, we might be able to pick up some more off of selling some of these other properties too, to add to that, to make it even more, 'cause there's, I think the, behind Kroger's, Rob says, there's gonna be like forty thousand to clean that up.
Oh, really?
'Cause asbestos stuff.
Okay. Um, the last item, I really don't have to look to a page number, this is just information for you, um, Nancy Meister's gonna retire next year out of, uh, the utility office. Um, she'll be here, she's gonna take some time off in January and February, probably part of March, um, so we're trying to figure out a way to, if she's gonna be off, to get someone in there, we have to put her job out to bid, which internally will probably be filled, and then we might have to put that job out to bid, but in the meantime, I gotta get someone trained, so when Nancy leaves, we have somebody that can walk into either Shay's job or Nancy's job, so I'll have to get back with you on how we do that, because I don't think it's, we have to go in and change and fill it, and then that just causes more problems, so I'm gonna have to get with the union to see how we might be able to do a temporary transfer for three months, so you're on like a thirty-day transfer, and then, you have to put it back at the regular job for a week or whatever, and, so I'm trying to work it out with the union, and with Joyce and Kim, and trying to figure out how to do that, to get someone in place to learn everything, so they're trained when, uh, Nancy leaves. The only one other item we're still waiting on is the bridge repair at Mansfield Street and Poplar Street. Uh, I haven't got the numbers from Lynn yet, so I have to get those to you.
What do we make out with the bridge repair on, on Mary?
That's, that's one we're waiting on.
That's on Mansfield?
I did, I'm sorry, it's Mary, sorry, Bruce, it's Mary and Poplar, so.
Yeah, there's no bridge repair on Mansfield, you're talking about rerouting the water.
Yeah.
A little bit.
That was Mary Street, I'm sorry, that's my fault. So I don't know if we, if we just wanna schedule another meeting in beginning of December, when you have the final, where we end the member at, and, you know. You wanna put it calendar, you wanna wait and let a council or committee meeting, it's up to you.
Let me open my calendar.
Then it's up to the committee.
That first week of December, I don't know, uh, we have council meeting on.
Monday, the first day of the month.
First day of the month. And, uh, that Thursday is, uh, candlelight Christmas downtown.
And committee meetings.
And committee meetings, and that's a problem.
And a movie.
Oh, there's a movie that night too?
Kevin Wright?
I think that's what the plan gonna be, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't the governor just ban gatherings up?
I don't know. So you wanna make it the following week, on like Monday, the deputy's.
Seven.
My phone is just going.
Does that work for you guys? Does that work for Joyce?
I think so, um.
Kevin, seventh, okay for you?
Seventh of December?
Yes, sir.
As of right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine for me too.
Four thirty?
Yep.
Bruce, okay?
And then we should be able to finalize things for the meeting on fifteen, hopefully.
And then we'll, we'll get the information from Galian, and I'll get the, uh, number we're looking at on bridges. We'll get that to you ahead of time, all right?
Anything else? Anybody, anybody else have questions on the budget? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Drive a second.
We didn't wake you up, did we?
All right, you're adjourned at five thirty-two PM.
Yes, sir, thank you.